For Tuesday, June 25th, do we have any final action to announce?
No final action, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then we will adjourn the specials meeting and convene the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, June 25th, 2019. If the clerk will call the roll, please.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
Gaylord.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
And Howell.
Here. If you will join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any agenda update?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there is a supplemental correspondence regarding item 8A. The letter has been presented to you previously. It is also available to the public on the table at the back.
Okay. And with that, we will move to business from the floor, which I'm going to start. And then, that is about any items that are not on the agenda. So if there's anybody that would like to speak to us about anything not on the agenda, please fill out a blue card and get it to the officer at the other side of the room. Otherwise, if Megan Murphy and the Tourism Bureau folks would meet me down front. I know, I forgot my hat.
We are honored to recognize Hanley's Western Wear this year as our Grand Marshall of the Folsom Pro Rodeo as we celebrate year 59. And thank you to Hanley's for keeping the western spirit alive in Folsom.
Thank you for being here. So, where's your other half?
She's, she had to do kid stuff.
Okay, so, did you actually introduce her?
Yeah. Oh, Julie. Sorry. Julie Spitler with Hanley's Western Wear.
So, how long have you guys been in Folsom?
So, we've been in Folsom for 58 years as Hanley's Western Wear. My grandma and grandpa started it 58 years ago, so this was like when Sharon and all the girls from the chamber asked me, like, I immediately bursted into tears because it meant so much for our family. I wish that Grandma could be here and Grandpa, but we are being honored to be here today and just to accept this award and just everything, just be the Grand Marshals. It should be them, but we're so thankful that we're here in their honor. So, thank you guys so much.
And thanks to you guys for all of your... I know Julie posted about this, but I have had many friends that no longer live in the city of Folsom, but still buy stuff from you guys.
Yes.
And Julie, you need to tell them about the accounting system.
So, we literally, Grandma has literally always written down, like, the men's sizes and what brand they have in books. And now, my cousin does the books, Grace, who isn't here today, but she still does the same thing. So, if you come in and say, "Hey, my grandpa locked boots 20 years ago," we will literally have handwritten documents, like, we've got stacks and stacks. And now, you know, we just don't throw it anywhere away, and we can go, and we can look at it. But you're right, as in, we still get people who randomly will come from different states, and they'll just, they're so loyal, just like Folsom is, and they'll come and buy their stuff, and we just feel so honored that, you know, it's still going because of people like you.
Okay, so, I have a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming July 4th to July 6th, 2019, as Western Rodeo Days in the city of Folsom, whereas the city of Folsom proudly recognizes Folsom's western heritage and acknowledges the benefits of preserving the traditions and customs of the city's history, and whereas the annual Folsom Pro Rodeo is a cornerstone of Folsom's link to its colorful past and is thoroughly enjoyed by residents and visitors alike, and whereas this year's event, to be held July 4th to July 6th of the Dan Russell Arena, marks the 59th anniversary of the Folsom Pro Rodeo, and whereas rodeo park is renamed for the Folsom Pro Rodeo ambassadors, Jim Digger and Sharon Williams, in honor of their long service to our community and the Folsom Pro Rodeo, and whereas the 59th anniversary highlights include all the traditional rodeo events, such as saddle and bareback bronc riding, steer wrestling, team roping, bell racing and bull riding, performance by the Painted Ladies Grill Team, flying cowboys, professional bull jumper, rodeo clowns, nightly fireworks, the crowd abusing mutton busting, and live music in Mike's Golden Spike Saloon, and whereas in honor of the traditional patriotic theme, the Folsom Pro Rodeo will celebrate with the ever-popular inner arena fireworks, whereas the 59th anniversary of the pro rodeo involves the assistance of hundreds of volunteers and a tremendous amount of community support that is most appreciated. Now, therefore, I, Kerry Hallam, Mayor of the city of Folsom, do hereby proclaim July 4th to July 6th, 2019, as Western Rodeo Days in Folsom, and call upon all citizens to cowboy up and join in the festive mood, celebrating the 59th anniversary of the Folsom Pro Rodeo. And be it further proclaimed on behalf of the Folsom City Council, I extend sincere best wishes to the Chamber of Commerce for a successful rodeo season, proclaim this 25th day of June 2019.
Aww.
Thank you. First one is Ian Cornell and Sarah Brown.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Howell, Vice Mayor Aquino, members of the city council. I'm Ian Cornell, a resident and business owner in Folsom, and I wear a lot of different hats in the community, but here, I'm tonight here to represent...
Except your cowboy hat's missing tonight.
My cowboy, if I'd have known, they look so great. Here to represent Folsom Vibe.
You can stop and get a new one at Hanley's tomorrow.
That's right. She'll have one ready for me, it's extra large. Representing Folsom Vibe, Folsom Vibe is V Y B E. Sarah Brown's with me, she's our t-shirt model tonight. Folsom Vibe is a fundraiser for Folsom's Twin Lakes Food Bank. It's a celebration of the local music scene. It's a, it's an album, a CD, that's going to be cut and available, but it's also a record release party scheduled for Thursday, October 17th, at the Harris Center. Tickets go on sale this Friday, which is why I'm here today. Friday at 8:00 a.m. is when tickets go on sale, $25 to $75. The $75 of VIP experience includes a great dinner, backstage experience, meet and greets with the bands. As I mentioned, the event itself is Thursday, October 17th. The music is local music, and it's a wide variety of genres. We've got reggae, we've got rock, we've got funk, we've got folk and Americana. And there's a couple stories from there. One band, Short Trip, is a group that was founded in Mr. Vince Martini's music ensemble classes at Vista Delago High School in 2012. They're now young men, early twenties, I'm guessing, who produce some great music. And of course, they can't make a living making music, you know, especially, you know, at this stage, so they work in our local coffee shops. So, sometimes the people that are making your lattes are the people that are out there, you know, gigging at night. We've got Easy Dub, and one thing that surprised me, I was putting together some website information about a band called Easy Dub, which is kind of reggae improvisational group. Their drummer, Andrew Harrow, was on my son's soccer teams growing up. So, I'm looking at this picture, thinking, "The kid looks familiar," and sure enough, he does, and they're banging it out as well. We have Sunday Slim, a funk harmonica player, dance beat with a harmonica, which is kind of a surprise. And then, of course, arguably the most handsome man in Folsom, Joel Lane, who's also a talented musician, will be onstage there. Sarah won't argue his handsomeness, that guy's a good-looking guy. Anyway, the events are being produced by Outside 745. Outside 745 is created by the leadership of Lakeside Church. Outside 745, 745 Oak Avenue Parkway is the address of Lakeside Church. So, outside 745 means they're producing events outside and in the community, not necessarily church-related, but that benefit the community. So, last fall, we had Hope Full Circle at the community center here, and that was a fundraiser for Folsom's hope. We've got Folsom Vibe, fundraiser for Folsom's Twin Lakes Food Bank, and upcoming, we also have the Folsom Leadership Forum, which is a series of events featuring some dynamics features for small group leadership training. That's it for me, except Friday, 8:00 a.m., tickets go on sale. FolsomVibe, V Y B E dot com. You can check us out on Facebook and Instagram. Please like us there as well.
And where is the event being held?
Harris Center, Thursday, October 17th.
Okay.
Yeah. Good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And our next speaker is Marilyn Jasper.
My name is Marilyn Jasper, speaking on behalf of the Humane Society of the Sierra Foothills and Public Interest Coalition. As mentioned before, first, the well-established link between animal cruelty and human violence is fully embraced by National District Attorneys and Sheriff's Association, as well as the FBI. And second, childhood trauma, either as a victim or as a witness, can stay with a child well into adulthood. Witnessing baby calves jerked by the neck at the end of a rope, picked up, slammed down, hogtied, often drug by the neck, may be traumatic to a child's subconscious mind. As elected Folsom City Council members, we urge you to attend the rodeo next week and be allowed to go anywhere, pen areas, behind the chutes, the announcer's booth, or sit on the rails for unobstructed views to witness animal treatment behind the scenes on city property. With your overarching authority and responsibilities for city venues and activities therein, you have the right to monitor and note what happens to horses, bulls, and steers, both before and especially just as the chutes are open. It takes only one person with a hidden hotshot to surreptitiously administer the shocks. We urge you to note cat calves' behavior from holding pen calmness to panicked, straight-out flight when released from the chute. If anyone is near a calf from pen or chute area to release, note what is happening to the calf. The announcer's constant drone is meant to distract, minimize injuries, demonize animals, and praise so-called bravery of human violence inflicted on innocent animals. Next week's Folsom rodeo will bring abusive animal cruelty to Folsom with brutal events that never were tradition. We ask you to see for yourself firsthand and then consider revisiting future rodeo contracts in terms of ethics and what we are teaching children. Thank you.
Hopefully, I'm pronouncing this correctly. Tim Marrow or Mino? My apologies if I got that wrong.
Good evening. My name is Tim Merrill. Thank you. I've been a resident here in Folsom for 34 years and have enjoyed the growth of the Recreation and Parks District, or Parks Department, along with the Trails Division. Two or three years ago, there was a dedication of the Johnny Cash Trail, at which time there was national recognition given to this trail. However, since that recognition, since that opening, the trail along the Toma Street from almost the police yard up to the damn road has just gone unrecognized as far as weed overgrowth and dead trees. I just want to bring that to your attention, and wondering what is going to be done about the weed overgrowth? Excuse me.
We can't actually engage, but Elaine, I think if you could let our Trails folks know.
Yeah, actually, if you could speak with our Parks and Rec Director, Lorraine Pajoni, she's right there in the orange-colored sweater in the front row, she can talk to you about maintenance of that trail, stretch of trail.
All right.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
She's just right there over to your right, thank you. Our next speaker is Sarah Bradman.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Sandra Munoz Bradman. My sister Sonia and I own a shop. It's a nonprofit, Project Hope Center, doing business as La Vintage Pink Door. I want to thank council member Roger Gaylord for his active sincere concern for the shop owners and for our safety. Thank you. Let me explain. March 11th, a man went on a shopping spree by stealing one of our tote bags, using it to shoplift throughout the district, and using an invalid credit card to eat at Hop Sings, for example. March 13th, this man came back taunting the same merchants by staying in their shops for a long period of time. Thursday, March, I'm sorry, April 25th, my sister not, my sister called me at my Monday through Friday job, I work for Caltrans, I'm an associate transportation planner, and because she was very concerned about the same man came in and threatened her. So, Sonia was alerted by another merchant in another hallway on the 800 block of Sutter Street, that this man came back and was behind our building and threatened that merchant who was attempting to enter her building in the back. She called my sister to tell her that this man entered our building from the back, and at this point, my sister walked out of the shop to look for this man. Immediately, he seen her and forced her back into the shop, blocking her, not allowing her to exit the building, but threatened, threatened and kept continuing to yell at her. After this man threatened, my sister at our shop, he left our building but charged and threatened another merchant who was watching the whole ordeal event on Sutter Street in her truck. My sister was able to lock the gate, but could hear the merchant screaming that she was being threatened by this man. We learned later, when the merchant who was being threatened, she told Sonia that she drove away in her truck, and the man jumped in front of her, in front of her truck and threatened to kill her. I arrived at the shop later that day, 5:00 p.m., and we locked the building at 6:30. At this point, this man, the same man, was waiting for us outside of our building. He charged at me first, threatening, threatening me, yelling at me, hit me, hit me. And he continued to threaten to kill my sister and I by cutting up, cutting us up into pieces, demonstrating it by sawing motions. And so, at this point, another merchant came out and rescued us. This is not the only time my sister and I were threatened. My sister will explain that in her three minutes. On Sunday, August 19th, 2018, I was working in the shop, and I noticed a person in our adjoining suite who appeared to be in the side room near the sink. So, I noticed there were customers in there, so I walked over and asked her very kindly, "Can I help you?" And at that point, she turned around, and I noticed it was a woman, and she was outraged, screaming, threatening me, and she intently was looking at a paring knife I had just used to cut up cheese, so I blocked, blocked her from grabbing the knife, and I calmly settled her down, and she left the building. But during this time, she was spilling things, yelling, screaming, and on and on. My concern was the customers, so this, like I said, this woman eventually left. When my sister and I leave late after dark, there are numerous homeless camps inside the garage, up on the top level and also on the bottom, the very bottom level. So, it's scary. Approximately October, this is another, this are many incidents, I'm sharing another one. October 20, in 2018, a homeless woman pulled down her pants, urinated on the sidewalk on the 800 block in front of Sutter Street Grill customers. Another merchant went out there and told her to stop, she left. May 5th, 6:00 p.m., my sister and I were driving out of the garage, a man walked over to the garbage bin and pulled down his pants, started peeing into the garbage bin right there, and then there were people all over. The public restroom was like two feet away, and it was open. This is just a sample of what, what I'm really concerned about is the homeless community. It's not just homeless, homeless is not a crime. It's the situation that they're violent. That's all, the best I can describe it is what we encounter is violent homeless people. They don't want help, we try to give them information, they don't want it. It's just very violent. So, that's what I wanted to share with you, council members, and my concern, and I, again, thank you, Mr. Roger Gaylord, for your concern in helping us. Thank you.
Any of these encounters, did anybody call the police department?
Yes, we call every single time, and the police are wonderful.
All right, because there's several people from the police department that are here, so I would encourage you to have a conversation with the chief about this.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, and as you already introduced her, I believe this is your sister Sonia Munoz as the next speaker.
Me and my sister, we're twins, just in case you're wondering. We're actually triplets. We both opened the shop together two years ago. The name of the shop is La Vintage Pink Door. We're at 815 Sutter Street. My sister is still working, I'm retired, so I run the shop full-time. Okay, so, we opened the shop in 2017. March 9th, Saturday, the individual, his name's Amit. He first showed up at La Vintage Pink Door. He took our tote bag in one of our suites, we have four suites. He continued to like, like he was shopping. We weren't there at that time, we had our volunteers working in the shop, and they called us to tell us what had occurred, so they told us what he was doing, picking up items, putting them in the tote, and then he just walked out. I called the police, the police responded. April 25th, Thursday, 11:00 a.m., I observed Amit taking an advertisement sign at the end of the hall. This was the, this was the problem when he entered through the back door, which I never leave the back door open, but this time I did, it was kind of hot, so I wanted the breeze to come through. And he came in through, was holding one of our, on the rear end of our building, we have a spa, and he had their spa sign, ready to walk out with it, and I said, "Excuse me, put the sign down." And then, he came charging at me, and I had to literally back up into my shop, and he stayed at the entrance, he would not let me leave. I told him, "You need to leave, you're blocking my entrance, I'm calling the police." And he's yelling, he's cussing, he's saying so much profanity. The police, I told him, "The police are on their way," and he finally left. Then, I carefully watched him leave the building. As he was leaving the building, he starts yelling and threatening Tonya Lopez, who owns and who operated Horseshoe and Roses in the next hallway, 813 Sutter Street. She was telling me, "Get back in the building," so I locked the iron gate, but I could still hear him, and he's telling her, "I'm going to kill you, I'm going to chop you up," and she's telling him, "Leave Sutter Street," and he just kept yelling and yelling. I told, I yelled at Tonya, I said, "The police have been called," and she said, "Okay." I'm trying to call my husband, because she said she, she felt she couldn't leave, the way she was parked on Sutter, she was on the passenger side, standing at her door, so she couldn't get into her, she felt nervous just walking a few feet. So, she finally left, and the police arrived, but he had already fled. Okay, then later that night, after my sister arrived, we're locking the building, and there he was, waiting for us, and he came charging at us. His eyes were scary, piercing at us, and he starts cussing and telling he's going to chop, chop us up, and we're telling him, we called the police, but he didn't care. He stayed there. He stayed there and kept looking at us and threatening us. It was, it was so scary, and all we had between us was my cart and Sandra's purse, and then here comes Ron Peterson, who owns, he's a merchant. He came charging out and yelling at the man, "Get away, get away," and he literally saved us from this psycho coming at us. And so, Amit stayed there until the police arrived and they arrested him, because we saw him pulling things out of his pockets, because Amit's wearing like this jacket, pockets everywhere, and he's pulling stuff out, and looked like a knife or something. We were scared, so they arrested him. He's in jail, he was charged with a felony, he's got 180 days, so he's going to come out. I'm going to be scared, I'm going to be honest, because I know he's going to come back. He's going to come back. So, just wanted to let you council members know that we have a problem. It's not just us, there's other merchants, they're just not here. We encourage them to come here and tell their story, as their stories are pretty graphic, pretty scary like ours. And Roger Gaylord, he reached out to me that day, and I don't know why I answered my phone, because I was so upset, and then my phone rang, and I answered it, and it was Roger Gaylord. And he just assured me, he's going to take care of this, he's going to talk to, I forgot even what, who he said he was going to talk to, but I just was, I told him, "Thank you for calling me." So, I just want to let you know that, you know, we have a problem, and we need your support. We need all your members' support, please. Thank you.
Next up, we have scheduled presentation, the first of which is proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming July 2019 as Parks and Recreation Month. Councilmember Kozlowski will be presenting that.
You must be Neilia Munoz, Neilia Munoz, to accept this proclamation. So, the proclamation is that July 2019 shall be Parks Make Life Better Month here in Folsom, and the proclamation reads thus, "Parks and recreation promote physical, emotional, and mental health and wellness through organized and self-directed fitness, play, and activity; and Parks and Recreation support the economic vitality of communities by attracting new businesses, promoting community revitalization, increasing tourism, providing jobs, and generating revenues; and Parks and Recreation creates memorable experiences through engaging programs, dynamic events, and new opportunities designed to get people involved in their communities; and Parks and Recreation fosters social cohesiveness in communities by celebrating diversity, providing inclusive services, modeling compassion, promoting social equity, connecting social networks, and ensuring all people have access to its benefits; and Parks and Recreation support human development and endless learning opportunities that foster social, intellectual, physical, and emotional growth in people of all ages and abilities; and Parks and Recreation sustains and stewards our natural resources by protecting habitats and open space, connecting people to nature, and promoting the ecological function of Parkland; and Parks and Recreation facilitates community problem and issue resolution through the application of the skills of its community stakeholders in community engagement, collaboration, and leadership; and the California Park and Recreation Society has released statewide public awareness, a statewide public awareness campaign, which is Parks Make Life Better, to inform citizens of the many benefits of utilizing parks, parks, facilities, programs, and services; and the Folsom Parks and Recreation Department provides programs such as these, services, events, and experiences to all community members that further enrich lives daily; and the Folsom City Council invites all its residents and visitors to enjoy the many parks and recreation amenities provided in Folsom that not only enrich those that attend, but also adds value to the community, communities' homes and neighborhoods. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mike Kozlowski, on behalf of Kerry M. Howell, Mayor of the city of Folsom, do hereby proclaim July as Parks Make Life Better Month, and in doing so, urge all citizens to use and enjoy Folsom's parks, trails, open space, facilities, and recreation opportunities. Proclaim this 25th day of June 2019."
Oh, no, this is going to be a short comment. So, part of this was that I heard was about promoting diversity and providing inclusive opportunities, so I wanted to thank the city for doing that on behalf of families with special needs by supporting Folsom Runway and providing a full-time staff person so that people with disabilities can have access to those services. So, thank you.
That's the best result we can hope for.
And our next presentation will be by the... Thank you. And our next presentation will be by the Sacramento Yolo Mosquito and Vector Control District. Craig, our board member, would you like to introduce the speaker? I think you've earned that in, what, the 87 years you've served on the vector control board? I'm only kidding, but it's been a super-long time.
Good evening. I'm Craig Burnett. I'm with the Sacramento Yolo Mosquito and Vector Control District as a city of Folsom representative since 1978. And I also worked for the district, mosquito district, when I was in college. And Jack Kip, in his wise ways, appointed me in 1978, and here I am still. So the district does a great job. And today, you're very fortunate. We're gonna have Samer Elkashaf. He's assistant manager. He's got a PhD, and he's gonna give a presentation on what the mosquito abatement does for Sacramento and Yolo County. So here's Samer.
Thanks, Craig. So thank you very much for having us tonight. We always like coming out and giving outreach to all the cities and the counties that we serve on our activities. So as our name suggests, Sacramento-Yolo, we protect both counties. So Sacramento's our primarily residential area with 1.4 million residents, and primarily an urban area, with some areas in the south parts of Sacramento County and Yolo County, having about 300,000 residents, being an agricultural rural part of the county. Having both urban and agricultural components to our mosquito control program provides some challenges to us that I'll highlight in the next few slides. So here, we're looking at some agricultural sources. We have wetlands. We have rice fields. These are all large producing areas of mosquito activity. Mosquitoes grow in standing water. So whether it's a wetland or a rice field, that is a big container of standing water, if you will, and they can, they can grow thousands, if not millions of mosquitoes over the course of a season, which is why we have a very active monitoring and treatment campaign surrounding those areas. And more notably, the mosquitoes that breed in these sources can also transmit West Nile virus, which is the primary disease that we are concerned of here at the district. In our urban areas, the challenge, as opposed to having very large sources, is having very small sources that are hard to get to. So here, we have an example of sources that can grow mosquitoes in the backyard. We have anything from, you know, a swimming pool that can, in an urban area, put off thousands of mosquitoes, all the way down to buckets of water, and also the little saucer dishes you put on the bottom of your plants, potted plants, can also be a significant producer of mosquitoes. So again, the challenge here in urban environments is, there's a lot of backyards. We can't get to all those backyards and see those sources, which is why we urge residents routinely to do walkarounds of their property to make sure they're dumping and draining any standing waters in their yards. As far as how we address mosquito issues in the district, we practice what we call integrated mosquito management, and that is a scientific approach to the study of vector control. And it all starts with public information. We have a very aggressive public information campaign. You might have seen our billboards around the cities within the district. We have also banners on the light rails this year. And we also sponsor ads during the River Cats games on Channel 31. So those are all components of our outreach campaigns. We also go to a multitude of public events with our booths. So if you're ever at an event in the area, there's a good chance you'll see us out there, providing information to the public on how they can protect themselves from mosquito activity. And then after public information, we'll go into surveillance. You're only as good as the information that you have, and surveillance is what provides us the information to do proper mosquito control. So it starts with our dead bird program. And what I mean by that is, West Nile virus is a bird disease. So the first victims, if you will, of West Nile virus infestation is the birds in our county. So we will collect dead birds, test them for the virus as an early indicator of whether or not the virus is prevalent. From there, the virus moves into the mosquito population. So we have, we monitor the mosquito adult population. Mosquitoes are flying around, and we collect them in traps, and then we test them twice a week to see if there's any virus in those mosquitoes. And then we can use that as an indicator of whether or not we need to initiate mosquito control applications. And then we also do larval surveillance. So that is surveilling the presence of immature mosquitoes in the water, see whether or not they're present and they need our attention. We then move into different control measures from our surveillance program, one being biological control, which is primarily our mosquito fish program. We breed thousands of pounds of these fish on an annual basis, and we use those to treat areas of standing water that don't drain, that'll hold water for a long time. And in an environment where there are mosquito larvae, these fish will primarily eat those larvae over other food sources. So a very excellent tool for control in the appropriate bodies. We have ecological management or physical control, so that is removing standing water. We much rather remove water if we can, as opposed to treating it. And then finally, we have our chemical control, which is either our larviciding program, so putting larvicides in mosquito sources, or we have, we can do adult mosquito control as well.
Question for you on surveillance. Is there, is there a program that you guys have a drone where you actually survey land to find?
Yeah, so that's part of our ecological management program. So it's part of our source reduction program. We do fly drones to look to see where standing water is, especially in areas with large bodies of water. It's important for us not only to know where the water is, but where water isn't, because we don't want to spend time walking around an area where there's no water to be, to inspect for mosquito breeding.
I'll convey a compliment to you and your staff from a Folsom resident who found out there was a drone, and you guys knocked on their door, and they thought it was the city. And you ended up doing the fish treatment to their pond that they can't get the water out of. And they said you guys, the interaction was great, so.
Yeah, no, I mean, you know, one of the messages we like to give out is, you know, if you were having mosquito issues, please give us a call. I mean, we're a service that's already paid for through taxpayer dollars, and we're here to help. So, yeah, so.
You guys like found it, took care of it, and left, and they're like, "We didn't do a thing."
Yeah, I mean, that's, we try to be very fast and very efficient to get to the next problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry.
So as far as diseases, as I mentioned, West Nile virus is the primary disease that we're after. It's the most prevalent disease in the United States, and has been permanently established in our area since 2005. So every year, we not only have mosquitoes that come up positive, but we also have human cases as well. Other mosquito diseases that are on horizon but are not here yet are dengue fever, chikungunya, Zika. Those are all mosquito-borne illnesses. Luckily, we don't have the mosquito in our area that can transmit them, but they're only two counties away. So it's a matter of time before they invade our territories. Malaria is also a mosquito disease. It's been eradicated in the United States since the 1950s, but we do have the mosquito that can transmit malaria. So we get notifications from the county public health office if someone comes from overseas that has infected with malaria, so we can do surveillance around their property to ensure that they're not coming into contact with the mosquito that can pass the disease. As far as West Nile virus goes, here are some numbers on human cases statewide. So last year, we had 218 cases, 15 of which occurred in Sacramento County and another 11 in Yolo County. These numbers tend to be underreported. So these are the most severe cases of West Nile virus, which is the form of the disease that actually can invade your immune system, cause paralysis, blindness, other nasty symptoms that go in tandem with having a compromised nervous system. So for every, you know, case of this neuroinvasive form of the disease, there's approximately 30 to 70 cases of the mild form of the disease, which can appear as the common cold. They appear underreported, because, I mean, I don't know about you, but if I feel like I have a cold, I'm probably not gonna go to the doctor. And even if I do go to the doctor, they're probably not gonna test me for West Nile virus.
What, what do you attribute the smaller number in 2018? It seems like it would go with the wetness of the, of the weather, but that's upside down from what we experienced.
Yeah, so there's a couple of ideas of why these trends exist. One, one thought is, when you have not that much water, the mosquitoes, or sorry, the birds tend to congregate around the limited available water, which is where all the mosquitoes happen to be breeding. So the fires can cycle more effectively. So when you have more bodies of water, the birds can spread out more evenly, so they're less likely to collide with those mosquitoes. So that's just one idea. Did I answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. However, if you look at mosquito activity, which I don't have up here, last year was a very intense mosquito season for West Nile virus. We had a lot of mosquito infections. So in our area, specifically Sacramento County, Placer County, San Joaquin County, we had a very intense West Nile season, which is not reflected in the overall state number. As far as Folsom goes, last year was a relatively mild year for West Nile virus, which is good. We only had two mosquito samples that tested positive for West Nile virus and two dead birds, which is great, because if you look to the adjacent community here, we had quite a bit more activity. So, so last year was a relatively mild year, which is something we like to see. It's, it's not nice when you have this level of activity everywhere within the county, because then we're spread a little bit too thin. As far as what 2019 will bring, what I can say right now is, we haven't had any mosquitoes test positive or birds test positive for West Nile virus to date. I mean, I'm saying this now, but of course tomorrow, we'll probably get our first positive. So, which is good. I mean, it's late, late June. We typically start to see activity early June.
But still, you just jinxed yourself.
I know. I did. It's gonna happen tomorrow. I'll give an update to the city council tomorrow. But we, because of the wet winter, we had a lot, we have a lot of standing water, and our mosquito populations are a little bit higher than we'd like to see, just because there's a lot more breeding sources. So what that means for West Nile virus, I don't know. But what I do know is, we do have a lot of mosquitoes right now. So we're working a lot of overtime to handle that and address it. As far as what residents can do to best protect themselves, is to drain standing water around properties, avoid being outside during dusk and dawn, which can be difficult during the summer months. So if you're outside, please dress in long sleeves and pants when outside, which can also be difficult. So if you can't do that, defend yourself with repellent. We give out repellent by the pallet. So if there's events going on in the city of Folsom that you would like repellent to have, please let us know, and we'll be more than happy to bring it over to you guys.
Rodeo's not a bad idea.
What was that?
Rodeo.
Yeah, absolutely. So we can, I'll have our PIO reach out to your information officer so we can get some repellent out for that event. Make sure screens and doors are in working condition. And most importantly, please let us know if you have any mosquito issues or suspected mosquito issues. We try to get back to folks within 24 hours after contacting us. So we are, again, a service that's already paid for. Please take advantage of it. And with that, I'd like to thank you for your time and leave our contact information on the overhead.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And our next item is a scheduled presentation about the upcoming workshop on July 10th, 2019, for the Aerojet Area 40 cleanup.
Did you put it on?
No, I sent it over. I thought that you guys were gonna have.
All right, let's see.
Lorraine, it's in the folder. It's open in the PowerPoint folder.
It is, okay. Got it, got it, yes. Okay. First off, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, Lorraine Pajoni, Parks and Rec Director. I'm here just to introduce this next scheduled presentation by Aerojet. There's an area in the south part of the, in the Folsom Plan area, in the southwest quadrant, that is owned by Aerojet and has been identified for remediation. The city and Aerojet have been working together for many years on the plan for cleanup of the area. It is an EPA Superfund site known as Area 40. The city has also worked with the EPA and the Department of Toxic Substance Control since 2014. And the DTSC presented the draft remediation plan to the city council, June 12th, 2018, and then had a public workshop on June 20th of 2018 on that draft plan. The final remediation plan is now complete, and the cleanup effort will begin soon. EPA will be holding a workshop this July, July 10th, and Chris Venessi, to my left here, from Aerojet, is here to tell you a little bit more about the upcoming workshop and the cleanup schedule.
Thanks, Lorraine.
Welcome, Chris.
Yeah. Thank you for having me here. I appreciate the time to talk. Again, I'm Chris Venessi with Aerojet Rocketdyne. We're gonna just introduce a community workshop that we have coming up. The community workshop is scheduled for July 10th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Folsom Community Center, just next door. And we're gonna talk about the cleanup activities that are associated with the remedy for Area 40. As Lorraine mentioned, Area 40 is located within the Folsom Plan area, on the western edge, just along Prairie City Road. It was used by Aerojet in the past for, for operations associated with rocket manufacturing and testing. At the meeting, we'll have about a 20-minute presentation on the cleanup plan itself. We'll have an open house afterwards, providing exhibits and details on the plan. The community's welcome to come. We've sent out flyers to about 5,000 residents. It was included in the June-July Folsom newsletter, a notification that went to all the residents. There's notifications in the Sacramento Bee, in the Folsom Telegraph, and there's notifications on EPA, DTSC's websites for Area 40 of the upcoming meeting. Just as a summary, the cleanup components, in the map that we have up here, the olive-green area is the park, future park area. Community Park West is what it's slated for. The remedy within the park area is soil excavation and some land use covenants to ensure that it's used as a park. There's also an area that's open space. It has wetlands in it, so it's mandated by the Army Corps of Engineers to be protected as wetlands. We've got a little bit of remedy in that area that includes excavation, some, an owl box and a raptor perch to discourage burrowing animals in the area, some fencing to restrict the access of the area to park users, a below-grade groundwater remedy, and some additional land use covenants in that region. We also have some residential areas on the north and on the south, and a commercial area, which is shown, commercial area is shown by the pink. The residential areas are the blue, and there'll be some land use covenants associated with those. All of this information will be described in that workshop that's on July 10th. We've got a schedule. We anticipate being out in the field late August, early September, where we can get all the excavation work done. Following excavation, there'll be an extensive monitoring program that will include groundwater monitoring, soil gas monitoring, ambient air monitoring, to ensure that we've met the cleanup goals. The objectives here for the, for the cleanup are to meet unrestricted use, although we're going to still restrict the property as a park, because we've got agreements with the city to make that area a park. Again, about two, two months to get the field activities completed, and then we'll do the long-term monitoring. Could be a year to, two to three years of long-term monitoring to ensure that we've remediated the area successfully. If during that 12 to 36 months, we find that we need additional remedy, we've got that in the plan, and we can do additional remedy to ensure we meet those cleanup objectives. And then there'll be some reporting at the end, and the EPA, US EPA, the State of California Department of Toxic Substance Control, and the State of California Regional Water Quality Control Board will all certify that the property has been cleaned up in accordance with their plans and their cleanup levels. So again, just wanted to come up and invite everyone and let the city council know that we do have a workshop coming up just next door, July 10th, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Folsom Community Center, to describe the cleanup objectives. So, thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Chris?
Yeah, Chris, can I ask you, sorry, are there any questions? Presumably, there have been other Superfund sites around the country that have been cleaned up. Will you have some information or maybe examples about that at, at the community meeting?
We will. I'm planning on having a handout that describes the other locations that have been, Superfund sites that have been converted to park areas, other beneficial uses. There's a wide variety of Superfund sites that have been put to beneficial use, but I think the park areas would be the most beneficial for this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I just wanted to say thanks for the accessibility for the information. I've had two pretty in-depth meetings with, you know, folks from your staff, as well as Easton, and it's pretty consistent. And I really like that, the fact that you're able to express what's going on in a digestive manner. And I think this will be really good for the public. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Chris. Ernie, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do have some questions. I attended a CAC meeting opening Rancho Cudobah maybe two or three weeks ago, and they made a presentation on Area 40. Now, I've been watching Area 40 for eight, nine years, 10 years, because when I came on this, this council, I came from the park commission of 20 years. So I'm very concerned about parks. And when I saw the master plan that indicated that area, and I used to travel quite a bit down Prairie City, and I saw all those pipes and all that kind of stuff, I said, "What the heck is that? It's a park site." Because I'm very, very, very concerned about parks right now. Initially, when the plan came out, there was no alternate site. That was the site. And the conversation that came back to me when I raised the question was, "Make it a parking lot." And I said back to the Aerojet, "If you don't build on it, we don't play on it." And I haven't changed my- And I haven't changed my position one iota on that. Now, I'm not, not questioning your ability and your desire and your dedication to make it right, but I get concerned, why don't we just take the alternate site and, and let you go ahead and do the, the, uh, the renovation and, and cleanup on the, on the current site? Um, you know, I'm not, we, we, I don't think we're gonna be needing it within, hopefully the timeframe, but I was amazed at your engineers that were at that meeting that told how much, like, how much dirt you're going to take out of that area, okay, in order to do what you have to do. At that time, there was no indication of where you were going to put that dirt. Now, whether you're going to make a, uh, a dump on the Aerojet property to do it, or you're gonna take it somewhere, I guess it's, it's not that easy to take contaminated soil someplace. I mean, you know, I, my question is, uh, this meeting is probably as important to the residents of Folsom as any meeting they could go and attend. I, I recommend that they come and listen and, and be concerned. Um, not that I'm questioning that you won't do what you're saying you do. I'm, I'm hopeful you will, but that's a big problem out there in the south area I see, okay? And I'm not very normally negative, but I am very, very concerned about this one. And, uh, I'm going to monitor it as close as I can, and definitely will be at that meeting to hear more conversation. Uh, that CAC meeting was very eye-opening to me, in that I thought I knew what was going on, but I was, I, I came away a little scared, and I came right back and talked to the city manager on that subject the next day, expressing the concern. And so I think, um, your committee, your group, which I'm sure are very qualified, um, make no, make no mistake, that's a very big concern to this city, that we get it right and as soon as you can get it right. So I just wanted to make, go on the record that that, that is, uh, that's not something to overlook as far as that, uh, fine area, okay? And, and again, I want to be sure that if you're gonna have an alternate site, you don't somehow, that alternate site over the years disappears and it's not there in case we need it.
Ernie, can I just, yeah?
A little bit of clarification on that. Um, Chris is here tonight to talk about Area 40, which is property that is owned by Aerojet now, that must be cleaned up regardless of what happens. It's not Aerojet's responsibility necessarily for the alternate site. That's, that's a bigger question for the city and all of the landowners and the planner, yeah. But having said that, Chris, could you explain what, um, where the soil's gonna be removed to?
Sure. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Sheldon. I, I appreciate your comments and, and understand your concern. Recall that, uh, the, the area, the park area is owned by Aerojet Rocketdyne today, and it will remain in Aerojet Rocketdyne's ownership until the EPA and the DTSC and the Regional Water Board say it's safe for it not to be in Aerojet's, in Aerojet's hands. If it never makes it to that state, then it'll never leave Aerojet's hands. So, rest assured, it won't be allowed to be a commut park until it's been cleaned up. That being said, uh, there are multiple areas where, uh, the soil can be taken. They will not be stored on Aerojet's property. There are Class II landfill disposal facilities that are EPA-approved, landfill disposal facilities where the, the soil will have to go, so.
Thanks. Any other question?
No.
Thank you, and we will see you on July 10th, next door. And with that, we will move to the consent calendar. Is there anybody that would like to pull anything from consent?
I'll move adoption of the consent calendar.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
You have a motion, a second? The clerk will call the roll, please.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes.
And with that, we will move to new business, and that is consideration to amend the 2019-2020 city budget to add one fire battalion chief and one traffic enforcement officer. Is there a staff person that's gonna do this, or is the council member who made the request gonna talk about it?
We don't really have a, a formal staff, um, uh, report or a presentation for this item, because you've already, um, heard the budget in its entirety and, um, and approved it in that form. Uh, Councilmember Gaylord did ask that this be brought back, and so I, um, ask you to lead off our conversation.
Absolutely. Uh, so we had long in-depth discussions, obviously, and, you know, we went ahead and approved the budget. I made a request to put this on the agenda. Um, I'm absolutely certain it's something we need. Um, I know there's a hyper-focus right now in the community with regards to traffic safety, and in general, we, we gave a couple of things. I think the, the, the idea here is, you know, most of my colleagues, and if not all, do not want to touch the, the reserve fund, so I'm, I'm fine with that. I understand that and I respect that. The option for CalPERS annual payment, uh, is still on the table and can be reviewed every 12 months. It's nothing that we have to lock into, but it does create not a revenue as a term that, um, would change into more just funding, uh, savings, if you will, which does, we will realize that annual savings every year, um, even when PERS grows, as, as PERS grows, that, that savings we, or discount we get by annually paying out also grows. So, what I want to do is, is utilize that option, uh, in tandem with, we also passed the ambulance, uh, fee increase, uh, which recognizes revenue, or not revenue, but additional funding, if you will, from those fees, which we haven't realized yet, but we, we've adopted. Um, so I want to apply both of those to adding these two positions, one being a traffic safety, or traffic, uh, a police officer for traffic enforcement, uh, the other for the battalion chief. Battalion chief, you know, prior to the chief's coming up and explaining, you know, their asks for the budget, which I fully respect, you know, this isn't a goal or exercise to, to go around anything outside of just seeing things that I think that we really need and we need to build on, uh, and I want to find methods and ways to do so. Um, having the, the, the fee increase applied to this, as well as looking at outside-of-the-box ways to fund, uh, strategic positions I feel like we, we need, is my goal here. So, adding the two positions is 500,000, give or take a little bit, right? So roughly estimating, that's the cost, 200 for the PD, 300 for the battalion chief. Um, that leaves us with, uh, the CalPERS annual payment savings, all in minus the, the extras is 158,000. And Jim, stop me if I'm incorrect on any of these numbers. Um, the other ambulance fee increase, you know, we estimate to be something around 326,000, right? So the delta between the two is, um, I think about 18,000. Sorry, let me just do a little math real quick. So yeah, we're looking at about a $16,000 delta between the two. So, um, my thing with some of the, in the staff report, it explains, you know, the general fund, we, we subsidize ambulance services right now from the general fund, but to me, everyone does that. That has dual purpose within, within those capacities, so our paramedics are also firefighters, so we're gonna subsidize that no matter what. I feel like it's right for these, at least, uh, you know, speaking with the ambulance fee to go back to, uh, where it's, where it's being generated from, so not to the general, but, general fund just to be used somewhere else. I want it to go back to that aspect. So, I'm asking for us to approve these two positions based upon these two funding mechanisms, not revenue generators, but funding mechanisms. So, I, I'm gonna ask for, uh, us to pass that tonight. So I'm happy to hear anyone else, comments, questions, concerns, or ideas?
Roger, is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Can we ask some questions of staff?
Of course you may.
Okay. Jim, I have a question for you. Um, I understand that, that, you know, it all goes into the general fund, but, um, is it, is there a practice by which, um, let's say that the department that generates the revenue also benefits from the revenue? I mean, for example, if we were to use, um, if we were to switch our PERS payment to an annual lump sum payment, which I actually am in favor of, but, to me, the savings that that generates should go toward paying down the unfunded liability, at least making a very, 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 very small dent, right? So is there, is there some sort of philosophy about that, that, uh, you know, ambulance fees are generated, that those go back toward the fire department?
Yeah, it's actually more than, uh, just a practice. If you have a user fee, uh, which the ambulance fee is, that money has to go to the use for which it was generated. Uh, in this particular case, what actually happens, because you've already adopted the budget, um, if you were to then appropriate this as revenue, it frees up an equivalent amount in general funds, uh, by doing that.
Okay. Um, would the city manager mind if I asked Chief Hillman some questions?
No problem at all.
Okay. Hello, Chief. Uh, just to make sure we're all on the same page as far as staffing, um, it's my understanding that full staffing for the police department is 78 officers, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And that includes you?
Yes.
Okay, and where are we today?
We have 76 sworn today.
Okay, so we have two vacancies. Are we...
Do we have two vacancies that are not about to be filled, or we have? My understanding was we were at full staffing. Are we, we still waiting for two people to get out of the academy?
No, we have 76 sworn today. We have one person in backgrounds, and we have one, uh, position that's vacant, uh, that we are testing for.
Okay.
So, so of the 76, um, back in February, uh, this council had the privilege of, of going to swearing-in for seven new officers, right?
Yes.
So I believe two of those were lateral from other agencies.
Yes.
Uh, what's their status? Are they full-fledged and they're out on their own?
Yes, they're by themselves, handling beats and on their shores.
And what about the five who had recently graduated from the academy?
Those five are still in training. We anticipate, uh, three of them to be off-training in the next, uh, couple of weeks, and, uh, two others to be off-training, um, probably in August.
Okay, so when you say in training, they are, they're in a, in a car or whatever with another officer, so, okay, so then...
That's correct. We don't count them as, uh, police officers yet. They're not in a solo status. They have to be with a, another officer.
Okay, okay. Um, in, in the budget book, uh, when you talk about, you know, trying to reduce, um, traffic accidents and fatalities, you talk about enforcement, which is obviously what we're talking about tonight. You talk about engineering of the roads, which you can't do anything about, but it also talks about education. Uh, is there any plan, uh, maybe you coordinating with Christine Brainard's office, to a, any sort of education or awareness campaign?
Yes, and, and we do work with, uh, engineering as well.
Okay.
So, uh, um, the traffic safety, we look at that in three different ways. We look at engineering, education, and enforcement. So it's, it's not just the motorcycle officers going out and doing the enforcement efforts by writing tickets. We also look at, and, uh, education, which could be, uh, increasing our social media, um, getting the message out, uh, using our message boards. We have several electronic message boards, moving those around town with messages to, uh, address some of these concerns, uh, slow down, buckle up, whatever we're having problems with, we can identify that and try to get messages out, uh, using, um, our communications, uh, director to, to help get that message out, as well as the police department's public information officers. Uh, we also use the Every 15 Minutes program in getting messages out to the school district to help, uh, disseminate information to the schools once they're back in session. And then engineering, we work with, uh, our public works department, and, uh, we work hand in hand with them, because we might find that one intersection, uh, we're having more collisions at. With some of the new technology that's going in place in some of these intersections, uh, we're able to determine if red light running is a problem, the public works department can help us out with that and say, "This, uh, is a problem at this intersection." We can then focus our, uh, efforts to, uh, combat that problem at that intersection.
Okay. Um, your predecessor, Chief Renaud, I, I heard her say many times that we could get rid of about 97% of the property crime in this town if people would lock their doors, lock their cars, take their purse and their wallet and their cellphone and their iPad and their laptop out of their car. Do you think that's a fair assessment? Give or take?
Maybe then.
Okay.
Uh, we have a lot of crime that occurs in, uh, our businesses with people wandering into the, uh, other, you know, businesses, but, um, it, it is, it's a good assessment that a lot of crime does occur with people that leave cars unlocked and that we, uh, feel comfortable in our community, which is a great thing, but that there are people that take advantage of that.
And we are trying to, you know, continually push out messages as part of the education component of the department to harden the target.
Right, okay.
Tomorrow, we're beginning a campaign that will do just that, at the police department. We have messages prepared to go out, social media messages that will, um, just up our game when it comes to that, with messages about locking your cars, you know, wearing your seatbelt, don't leave your dog in the car during the summer months, uh, don't forget your baby when you get out of the car, all these types of things are messages that we're gonna be really pushing to, uh, the community. Our police department's PIOs are very interested in getting that out as lo, as well as little video clips and, and pictures of people getting pulled over, things like that.
Okay. But, so, when you've got people assigned to patrol and you've got people assigned primarily to traffic, if I'm on patrol and I'm not responding to a call and I see somebody with a traffic violation, I'm gonna pull them over, right, and cite them?
Hopefully so, yes.
Okay, so...
Well, we know Sarah would.
Well, I mean, so, so if we've got people assigned to patrol, but maybe we, we don't have as, you know, people are taking a little bit more responsibility for themselves, we reduce the property crime, those people could be, could be also out making traffic stops and, and all that kind of stuff.
Sure, our patrol officers, like Officer Husar here, is a, a generalist, so he's gonna respond to whatever calls there are, as well as handle traffic incidents. Our traffic officers, we have a limited number of traffic officers, but they specialize in traffic incidents. When they're on duty, they respond to all of the traffic collisions. They focus their efforts on traffic enforcement and traffic collisions in an effort to reduce those, um, collisions and to, uh, reduce complaints from our neighbors that are having problems in their neighborhoods, um, be it people running stop signs, speeders, whatever. They're trying to make the community safer, uh, through their efforts. They take the data that we get on collisions and they, um, say, "Okay, this shows that we need to be here at this time to reduce collisions." They're able to do that. Where our patrol officers, our city's divided up into certain geographical areas. We have five geographical areas for our Folsom. Each patrol officer is given a certain area, and they're responsible for that area. They have to handle calls. As I had said a few weeks ago, we have about 61,000 calls a year that our officers respond to. They are pulled off of calls, whereas traffic officers, they're more flexible with their time, and they can spend time sitting at an intersection just watching for violators.
But, yeah, I just, I did just want to ask, you know, to your point, uh, there aren't neat little buckets here. Crime is crime and officers are officers in terms of, you know, if something happens, any officer can, can respond, if, if available.
Yeah, and that's, I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out, is, uh, what gives you the most flexibility? Because if at some point, you know, we were to give you more personnel, uh, is it helpful or hurtful to say, "We want to give you another traffic officer"? Is it more, I, I mean, you're the expert, right?
Hey.
Uh, and, and you are probably have to move people around depending on what's happening on a certain day.
So I can answer that, and we can just go off of, uh, one of the speakers today with the blue card, had an issue on Sutter Street. If, if I'm restricted to put traffic officers, a certain number of traffic officers, and maintain that, uh, and for whatever reason, through attrition, um, through just issues of people becoming injured, I have to maintain seven traffic officers, yet we're having problems in, uh, patrol because of, uh, injuries, uh, because of people retiring, um, I don't have enough people to put out on the street to handle some of the other problems that we're having on Sutter Street, uh, or elsewhere in the community. I'd rather have just officers, because my crime suppression team, right now, when I have officers in training, I don't have officers in my crime suppression team, because I've spread those people out to patrol.
Mm-huh.
My, normally I would have that crime suppression team down on Sutter Street, taking care of problems like we heard tonight, and that's where they'll be in a few weeks, once those other officers come out of training.
So you need the flexibility to move people around as you see fit?
I do.
And so, on that, we're not, when you hire an officer, an officer's an officer, you determine what their position is and what their role is, right? I'm not suggesting we label them and title them forever, correct?
As long as, it, well, it depends on how a, a, um, a resolution...
Actually, actually, just one second. Actually, um, the agenda item is add one battalion chief and one traffic enforcement officer, so that sounds to me like you're trying it.
Yeah, I think that the way it's worded currently, um, our interpretation of staff would be that chief needed to maintain that plus one in traffic.
So I didn't word that, so my, my point is, is it, is another officer focused on traffic enforcement?
Actually, Roger, you did. That's what was in your email.
Actually, what I said is that an officer focused on traffic enforcement.
Roger, we went from what was in your email... Roger, we went from what was in your email to me the morning after the last council meeting.
So let me just ask my final question, then I will yield the floor. So, we've got 76. We're going to have five who have been in training and are going to be out on their own in the next few months. Hopefully, we're going to get the 77th and the 78th officers hired. So would it be fair to say that we will see an increased police presence the second half of the year compared to the first half of the year?
And would that be two officers, once the officer 77 gets through your background check and you find 78? So does that actually mean an increase of, of two in the next few months, ideally?
Ideally. I'm very hopeful if everything goes right. If, if all the stars align. Last week, that's the way it was going to be, but then, you know, one of our officers got hurt. So, our staffing is at this level, 78. Of those 78 and 76 that I have, one of them is, has been working in dispatch for the past several months and is hopeful to come back. So, yes, we're, you will see them. They'll be around, not necessarily in cars, but we have those personnel, yeah.
Okay.
And I'm confident that we'll get those 78.
And, and when that happens, do we tend to utilize the services of our reserve officers?
No. Our, our reserve officers, we have, I think, three now, reserve officers. One of them we do occasionally use. The other two, it's, I should say, we use two reserve officers that can ride by themselves, and they come in a couple times a month, and then another one has to ride with an officer. So they're, what post allows them to do. And the ones that come in, they can ride by themselves, they do a lot of transports, help us out by going to the jail.
And we have, as, as you know, we've added a cadet program recently as well that, that helps relieve our officers of some, and not to denigrate what the cadets are doing, but relieve them of some of the more mundane work so that our officers can, can be out there and fighting crime as best as possible.
Including traffic collision investigations, so non-injury collisions. We have a cadet that responds to non-injury collisions when they're working to handle that, to free up some of the motor officers to remain available for enforcement efforts.
And I have one other comment. You talked about areas where we're having collisions and we send an officer out. What exactly does, does that accomplish? I mean, does having a police officer on a motorcycle, in a vehicle, sitting at or near an intersection, does that prevent an accident from happening?
Well, when, when we have, when we have collisions occurring in intersections or in areas, we go out and we enforce violations that we're seeing. So, yes.
Well, but you're enforcing it after the, after the accident already happened, so...
Or preventing the next one from occurring.
I think if you were looking at, you know, and Chief, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but if you were looking at, you know, the, the, over the last 12 months, there's no clear pattern to the accidents we've seen. And so, it really takes a combination of tactics. It's not necess, it's not so simple as just, you know, one officer at one location could have prevented all these, to be honest, and correct me, jump in any time, but...
Well, the fadals, with the fatal collisions.
Right, with the fatal collisions. And so, we're, you really have to hit it from all three of the Es: education, enforcement, and engineering. And that's what we're, we're working to do, coming at this from a lot of different angles. So it's, it's really a, a complex challenge. It's not something that's just solved with, you know, one, one officer, if I, if I may answer your question.
Yeah, let me, let me clarify a couple of things. I did ask for traffic enforcement officer in the email. It was under my, my impression was that an officer can be assigned to different things, as you said. My goal is to give you resources to focus on traffic enforcement, traffic safety, speeding, red light running, which is an increasing issue in the city. I don't think you can deny that. I don't think anyone on this council and this dius could deny that. I don't think any resident in Folsom will deny that. In fact, they want answers. They want, they want us to tackle this. So, I would be fine amending the motion suggesting a Folsom police officer at your disposal so that you can free up resources to allocate, at the times necessary, additional resources for traffic enforcement. That's my goal here. It's not to, you know, hire somebody specific to that specific role. That's not what I interpreted it as. So if that's the case, we can amend that. But the goal here is to get another officer as a resource for you to use.
Can I, I forgot one more question. You see that people say this all the time, and I thought this at one point also. People will say, "Oh, if you just put an officer at Iron Point and East Bidwell, you know, you could pay for his or her salary by the tickets he or she writes." That, that's a myth, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay, can you, can you elaborate on that a little bit so everybody's on the same page?
So, when people do receive their fines from the courts, most of that money stays with Sacramento County. A lot of the fines, the breakdown, goes to the county of Sacramento. There's, some of the fees goes towards building a new court. But the city doesn't receive a lot of the money. We may have received, I believe, about $97,000 last year of the few thousand tickets that we wrote. So, the majority of the fines...
It's almost a wash.
Yeah, the majority of the fines stay with the county of Sacramento.
So, is it, or is it not scientifically proven that the mitigation doesn't come from the actual enforcement of the person who gets the ticket, but the visualization of the enforcement from passerby's?
There, there's a lot of data that does show that, that I've read, that shows that the issuance of citations of officers pulling somebody over and the time that's spent with the officers pulling people over and issuing citations does reduce collisions.
Thank you. Just one other thing, because there's been a lot of chatter about this on Sarah's ticket question on social media lately. With regard, the, the same thing, with regard to the red light tickets can, well, I know how it works, and we've discussed it many different times in the 21 years I've been sitting here, but can you please clarify that the red light tickets are cameras that are installed by outside third parties and not a nickel of that money would stay in the city of Folsom?
I don't know where the money goes, but I know they are installed by outside vendors.
Many years ago, we had one, for about three months, and then it went away.
Usually, I mean, and Mayor Public Works Director can weigh in, but usually the arrangement is that the vendor installs the equipment at their cost, and then the fines, fine for the red light running goes back toward, to the vendor.
That's correct. So the, the maintenance costs and the operations and the upkeep and the, all the administrative work to utilize that system goes back to that vendor. And, and unfortunately, well, fortunately, I think, is we don't have enough red light runners and the volume of traffic that you see in other jurisdictions in our city that would justify them to even approach us to want to put one in. So it would be a, a, a loss for them to even come here.
They have historically come in and kind of taken a look and said, "Yeah, you, you don't have the threshold we're looking for here."
From my research, I found, I'm sorry, with the, the violation notice signs on the intersections actually produce a better result than the red light cameras themselves. So when you actually put, and you can confirm or deny, but...
It's going to cost you this much.
Yeah, it shows, you know, 490, whatever the, the violation fee is on the intersection, and it actually reduces less, and you don't get the political backlash from red light cameras, if we could even have them here.
And I, I should clarify that of that $97,000 that I talked about us receiving last year, some of that money is from penal code violations. So it's not all vehicle code violations. And some of that money comes to us from the California Highway Patrol, because when they write a citation along Highway 50 within the city limits, we get some of that money. So it's, the couple thousand tickets that I talked about us writing is not all that $97,000. Some of that comes from elsewhere, too. And I don't know how many tickets the highway patrol wrote. Probably just one or two, but I don't know.
I have a couple follow-up questions to what Councilperson Aquino was asking. The, setting anecdotal evidence aside, if you had an extra traffic officer today, where would you post them that is problematic for speeding and red light or stop sign running right now? Because I, I've heard of instances of people in virtually, at, at virtually every controlled intersection in our city where people go, "Oh, jeez, the people run the lights all the time there." And I just don't see that relative to my personal observation. I have seen it, but relative to how many people use the signalized intersections correctly. So I'm just wondering, first, that question, and then the follow-up question is, if you had, if you had one additional officer doing that particular job, and not to suggest that it wouldn't help, but is it a little bit of a game of whack-a-mole where you satisfy a desire to control one particular location, but we have, you know, dozens of square miles to patrol?
That's exactly what it is. We, we get a lot of complaints. We call them focus enforcements. And our officers move around going from one location to another. We have a crime analyst, and she tells us we have collisions that are occurring most frequently on, say, Wednesday between noon and 2:00 PM at this intersection. Also, on Wednesdays, between 9:00 AM and 11:00 AM at this intersection, our traffic officers try to get to those intersections during those times. We also go to the schools and make sure that the schools are safe, because whether or not there's collisions that are occurring at the schools, we want to make them safe. We, we go to the schools just to keep the, the school parking lots moving to help them. So, it's not just the enforcement efforts and the collision reductions, it's also being out there, helping out in other ways.
Sure.
Where the collisions are occurring, if I had another person today, I, I couldn't tell you for sure, because today there could have been four collisions at one intersection, and now there's a hotspot. And so we get maps every week, every two weeks, that says, "Here's the hotspots for the past two weeks. Something may have changed." And in the past two weeks, we may have had this intersection of Blue Ravine and East Bidwell Street might have all of a sudden lit up, and for some reason or another, that's now our hotspot. We're going to go to that area and enforce that area, and we're going to work there. And efforts that we have put into Folsom Boulevard and Blue Ravine might have worked, and we're now going to move elsewhere and then end up going back there in a month.
So it's a righteous game of whack-a-mole?
It, it certainly is. Just 30-something square miles.
Gotcha. So maybe this is a topic for an entirely different day, but the suggestion of deterrent signs, you know, we do actually have cameras at a bunch of intersections. We wouldn't probably actually use them for traffic enforcement, given the way that they're set up, but other types of deterrents wouldn't be insane.
Additional, additional signage, as well as what the chief alluded to at the very beginning, in terms of our sign boards are already planned and underway. I mean, that's a, that's a tactic we use.
Are the red light violation signs underway, or is that something you could add to that?
We can, I, we can certainly add those, yeah.
Yeah, I would consider that.
We, we've talked about looking at different methods to try to, what other communities have found to be effective. So, Dave and I just talked about that today. We talked about a couple weeks ago, looking for different things that, you know, could help us out.
So, so back to your, your staffing. It sounds like, you know, sometime in August, we may be at full staffing, but that's subject to injuries and all kinds of other, you know, unforeseeable situations. How does that compare to, like, last year on average? Like, right now, we're at 75. Some of those are trainees, so they have some limited duty for a little while longer, or they're in a training role. What, how does that compare on average to where you were staffed during 2018?
I think we were down to, we were in the 60s.
Okay.
Last year at this time.
So at least on paper, we should be better staffed right, right now than we were last year, and even better staffed later this year than we were, than we are currently.
And then, yes.
At least in, in theory, assuming we don't have a rash of injuries.
Correct, that's correct. And then, Councilmember Kozowski, I also want to add, you know, since today we're, you know, the agenda's item is a traffic enforcement officer and a battalion chief. In the traffic unit, and, you know, Chief, jump in any time if I'm off here, but the two officers that are coming off of training and will move into patrol, which moves two to traffic, which increases the total unit to eight, which is two sergeants and six officers, which is actually one off the highest level of staffing we've ever had in that, in that particular division, since we're talking about traffic today.
Yes, that's correct.
What was it prior to that, though? That was just a configuration you guys changed recently, though, right?
Yes, we had one sergeant and four officers.
If you look at the last five years, you know, we took a real beating in 08, 09. We lost about 150 employees overall, all the departments. But we look at the last five years when we started coming out of this problem. We, we hired around 31 officers, 31 people. Of that 31, 14 were all other departments other than safety. The 17 were in fire and police. So I've heard conversation here, and I've seen it on Facebook, where we're not keeping, keeping up with this, that we're shortchanging our, our, you know, offices in both areas. That's not true. That's not the facts. If you go back and look, that's not true. And, and, you know, and I, and I know how you feel about it, because I talked to you the other day. So I just want to clarify, you, you gotta be careful when we say we're not getting up. And I, I'm glad to hear the numbers you, you were talking about tonight. That's very good.
We, we are down from where we were then. There is no doubt that we are down from where we were prior to the 2008. We were, we had a lot more officers, and you and I have talked about that.
Yeah, and, and, yeah.
And, and we...
And I sat in the back room.
Right.
Watching the, the, knowing other police officers telling me the, the conversation came up, how many per 1,000, it's ideal, you know? And we had a lot more than what we would have qualified with the population. And I had no problem with that. We, we could afford it, and we did it. So, yeah, we're down, but we had very good staffing. In fact, we had overstaffing at that time, if I remember right.
We have very good officers that do their best.
Absolutely.
To get to the calls as quickly as they can and take care of business for Folsom so that we keep it a safe community, and they're doing an outstanding job.
Right. I agree.
I just want to add one more to do another outstanding job as well, so, that's...
Yeah, I do have a...
I want to add to that, that's it. And I'm happy changing that motion to police officer. You know, last, the last couple of meetings...
Could you just completely restate the motion and then make whatever comment you want to make?
Okay, so, and this is where we always get tied up, because I need to make sure it's stated right. I don't know what I need to say or don't say with regards to the, the pirs, the ambulance fee, and the increase in one officer and one battalion chief. So that's, that's the motion I'm looking to, to put forth. I don't know if that's stated right. Correct me, you know what I mean? There's, there's a lot of components in here. I don't know what needs to be stated and doesn't need to be stated, so...
Since you're looking at me, Councilmember Gielo, Madam Mayor, if I may perhaps assist, it is, it is entirely fine for the motion to be amended and clarified. So if that's the clarification as to, as to the motion, we're still dealing with additional one officer in the Folsom Police Department.
Correct.
And, and you're still staying with one additional fire battalion chief with the Folsom Fire Department.
Correct.
And amending the budget accordingly. If that's the motion as amended, then that can be considered by the council.
Now, does the amended motion need to include changing the pirs and the ambulance fee, or is that just side part discussion?
I, my recommendation, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Gielo, is to, is to bifurcate both. So if the motion moves forward with adding those positions, then you'll have to, and, and I candidly need, need our finance officers' assistance on this, because I think they have implications as to the budget. Once you add those two positions, then you'll have to...
It absolutely does, which is why my personal preference...
We need the direction. Yeah, we need the direction embedded in the motion as to how it's, how it's to be paid for.
Then that would make more sense. Then you'll have to have the motion including how you're going to pay for the two additional positions in it.
If I may, on the, on the staff report that you have in front of you, right in the beginning of the analysis, there are three elements that you would need to have included. One is to authorize the additional positions. One is to authorize the additional positions. The second is to appropriate revenue of equal value. And two would be to make the appropriation then to various salary and benefit accounts. Now, some of that, obviously, we could come back with the specifics on some of that.
No, we need to, the discussion tonight is about the budget tonight, so whatever's going to happen needs to happen at this meeting. We're not going to revisit the budget yet again at the next council meeting.
If I may?
So I just like clarification of what the motion is. I know Ernie's still got some questions, so I want to know what our motion is, whether or not we have a second.
And the mayor is correct, and thank you, Jim. The motion would need to include augmentation of the budget itself. That's what's suggested us tonight.
So what I asked was that the motion be for the council to amend the budget to appropriate those funds from those two sources, the Calpers' annual payment change, as well as the ambulance fee increase. Two, add one Folsom Police Department officer and one Folsom Fire Department Battalion Chief position. That's the motion.
Okay, do we have a second? Do we have any more discussion? I know, Ernie, you said you wanted to talk.
We don't have a second right now.
Does anybody want to second it?
You have to second so I can talk.
If you want to, you can.
Okay, I'll second, and we're talking. I wrote this out, and hopefully my voice will hold out. Somehow, coming to council, I can't talk no more. But I'm going to read this, and I hope it goes okay. First of all, I want to say that, first, that the two, that the men and women of our police and fire department do an outstanding job, and I can't say that enough. But that said, I am a man who spent my entire career in the military. And my time in the military instilled in me that you have to do the right thing, but you have to do it within your means. And that can be hard and unpopular sometimes. This is an extremely well-run city. There are dozens of examples of cities right here in California that are not well-run. And I, for one, am not going to make decisions that might seem easy and popular right now, but would have a terrible consequence, consequences for us down the line. Councilmember Gaylord has requested a battalion chief and a traffic enforcement officer. That's a half a million dollars. And that number grows. He actually originally wanted two of each, would be a million dollars, and that would grow. We don't have a source to pay for this. Yes, we increased our ambulance fees, but not a dime of that money has actually come in yet. It's not even effective until next week. We may not have been exactly right on our projections, and being exactly right is important when you're promising someone a certain job at a certain wage until retirement. Also, these fees are supposed to pay for the ambulance program, and we are millions of dollars away from that program being fully funded. As far as changing now how we pay pers, that's a great for one year. But what about the next year, and the year after that? What if we get cash strapped, and we want to change back? That is not a revenue source. That's a temporary reduction in expenditures, and that just is not good enough for my book. Roger also talked about using our rainy day fund. Our rainy day fund is for emergencies. I'm sorry, but this is not an emergency. And those who served during the recession know that we will need every dime of that fund and some more to get through the next one. Trust me when I say that it is that rainy day fund is depleted when we need it the most. Things would get very uncomfortable and unpopular around here. I do understand that the fire chief would like some support by the addition of a battalion chief. And I certainly understand that people are concerned about vehicle, pedestrian, and bicycle safety, and rightly so, so am I. I don't want to tie the city manager's hands. I don't even want to tie the police chief's hands in terms of telling him what officer he should place where. That's not for us to do. I would like to ask that the city manager address the concerns about vehicle, pedestrian, and bicycle safety in the best way she knows how. Deploy the resources and dollars accordingly, and report back to us quarterly as to the progress. On the fire side, if the city manager feels more temporary resources need to go into that department to push through, I know she would do it. I'm not saying I want every bit of extra unbudgeted revenue to pour into police and fire this fiscal year, because there are a lot of needs that come up urgently, some in police and fire, some not. I am saying that I want her to be, her to continue to do her job as a city manager, and assess needs each month, and work this problem, and report back. That doesn't require amending our budget, and I would, I think, is fiscally irresponsible to do otherwise at this time.
Anybody else have any comments?
I'd like to comment. I am struggling with this conversation a little bit for a number of reasons. I think that the, first of all, the identification of the potential funding source for the two additional positions. The ambulance revenue is something we all anticipate and know about and approved previously. So it doesn't seem like identifying it specifically is necessary for a motion, although I get the instructions. It is funding that's going to come into the city, and the assignment of it, once it's in the city, is Mr. Francis's assignment to, you know, adjust the budgets as necessary to make the appropriate payments. I asked the question because I had a little bit different perspective on it about the Calpers, the potential change to the Calpers payment strategy. And, again, Mr. Francis, you know, impressed upon me that you can look at it one of two ways. One is that it is savings in the calendar year that you make that change, and its potential savings in future years, provided that you never change your strategy, or don't have a reason to change your strategy, because the moment that you do, you don't have it in that subsequent year. So you can view it as kind of halfway between one-time funds and an ongoing revenue source, potentially.
That's correct, that's correct.
Yeah. As it relates to staffing of the fire department and the police department, I absolutely share everybody's opinion that the people that we have in uniform that work for the city do an outstanding job. I am encouraged to hear that the police department is reaching a staffing level that they haven't seen in a little, at least a little while, and that that in and of itself may help with this problem. And earlier, I kind of pejoratively dumped on anecdotal evidence. But I will say that my firsthand experience is that there's a heck of a lot of people that speed in Folsom, and really test the speed limits. And the people that I see, you know, getting through intersections in kind of an unsafe way, most often are using the old joke about yellow means, come on, come on, come on, you can still make it, right? So I do see an awful lot of that, and I think that there is a need to do, you know, the three Es, as our city manager identified. So the, and then finally, with regard to, you know, sort of the long-term prospects of our budget, I definitely share the caution that Councilmember Sheldon pointed out. However, there does need to be some reasonableness to being fearful forever. So I, right this moment, probably feel like, because we have anticipated adding a battalion chief in coming years because of the growth that we anticipate in the rest of, in the rest of Folsom, and because we've reached some staffing levels in the police department that should help with the problem, I'm not inclined to vote for this motion right this minute, but I am extremely close to wanting to take that step. And because we can't, we just can't be fearful forever that our budgets are going to be impacted the way that they once were, close to ten years ago. That's my commentary.
So I'll just add two more things. One, with regards to...
Is your microphone on?
Yeah, it's on, sorry. With regards to growth and adding a battalion chief, I don't think there's any, there hasn't been any, anything solidified or promised that we're going to add a battalion chief. We'll add a fire station, but that doesn't mean we'll add a battalion chief.
I asked that specific question when we debated this previously, and...
Just admin staff, battalion chief.
No, no, I asked about a battalion chief specifically, and I was told that that's a, you know, three-years-away likelihood, as we add staff in order to take care of our increased territory on the other side of the freeway.
That's correct. I mean, we do look several years ahead, especially with the addition of our newly annexed Folsom Plan area, and, you know, that position is programmed as are other positions as we grow, and at the appropriate time, and when the funding is available at that time. So, yes.
So the other part of this was, on the budget discussions, I asked my ask, and I was told, okay, cool, find us the money. What do you want to take out? How do you want to get money? So to Councilmember Kozowski's point, the ambulance fee increase was something that was already coming, so I can't claim credit for that. Jim's already seen and looked at things with regards to pers, I would imagine. We didn't know that. I had no idea. That's additional funding that we now have, that I found for my ask, not that I created or take credit for, but that I found for the ask. So it is something that we could potentially use. I haven't heard anything with regards to battalion chief when a new fire station comes online, and that changes the game. If you're telling me that we can, that we will review this, and we can, right now, we have three ambulances. We have one battalion chief and one chief. So to me, in just the two months I've...
No, Roger, that's not correct.
What am I, what am I missing?
Maybe the fire chief could come up and walk us through his current staffing, but no, that's not quite right.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers, Felipe Rodriguez, Fire Chief. So in the office, it's myself and a division chief, and then we have three personnel in the command level out on the field, working the twenty-four-hour shifts. Two division chiefs and one battalion chief out in the field.
So we have one battalion chief.
One battalion chief out in the field, yes, and two division chiefs were moved from administration to the field during the economic downturn, and they're currently there. I did want to just say one thing, you know, listening to everything, and Councilmember Sheldon, outstanding, I really did appreciate everything that you were saying. I see this as an opportunity for us to come together. This is a very important topic. I made a promise to our personnel when I was hired, that I would work very hard for them and for the city and this department, and that I would also tell them the cold, hard truth when I needed to. I think today is one of those days. I realize that the budget's been adopted, the budget was worked on very, very under, you know, very strict scrutiny, and I gave my ask, and I'm being honest with what I requested, additional battalion chief. We worked together as a command executive management team, and we came together as a team, by the direction of the city manager with the finance director, we came up with a plan, and we agreed to it. And I stand before you today to ask you to really consider that, that I do have respect for the budget and the process and what's happened so far. We've brought forth additional funding mechanisms for the future. We have not realized any of that yet. I've spoken to each of you at different times throughout my career here, and I see the immense support you have for public safety, both fire and police. I greatly appreciate Councilmember Gaylord, your support for us to bring on additional staffing. Yes, we do need additional staffing. Is right now the right time? With the funding that we have and the guarantees and all that? I don't know that yet. So I ask of you to please consider that with your decision tonight. There is going to be a time in the future that the city manager and I will sit together, look at the revenue that we might bring forth, the ambulance revenue, and make a decision. And until that time, I ask for your consideration on that, that we did this together as a team.
Well said.
I also feel, it's in the staff reports, but just for the public record, just as we talk about, you know, identifying a potential savings by switching the way we pay our pers, and that resulting in a savings each year, I think it's important to point out that there are other factors that impact on the other side. For example, we've been informed by our risk management team that our insurance premiums, because of the fires in California, are going up by almost a hundred and ten thousand a year. Councilmember Gaylord sits on the Air District Board. We were recently informed that it's all but a foregone conclusion that we will be paying upwards of a hundred and twenty thousand to a hundred and sixty thousand a year in a per capita fee. We're actively engaged in collective bargaining with labor groups, and we don't know that tally yet. So just as there are these, you know, little incremental things we can find, there are other things that are on a growing list of absolutely, you know, near a hundred percent certainty we're going to be paying those bills. So I just, I feel the need to throw that into the pool of meaning as you debate this issue.
All right, well, I'm going to throw my two cents in. I had conversations with some of the folks in the fire department a couple of months ago, relative to this whole that chief issue, and one of the things that I kept hearing over and over in about a couple of different hour-long conversations, was that a lot of this had to do with the fact that one of the individuals in the fire department is otherwise going to be responsible for the remodeling of Station 38. My understanding is that that is absolutely not going to be the case, and a lot of the things that used to get done by the fire department, or the library department, or whoever, we had people acting as project managers on construction projects, and all of that work is going to be shifted where it belongs, into the Public Works Department, with the engineers who do that on a daily basis. I appreciate all the work that police and fire and every other department does, but that's really not your area of expertise, and it is what the folks in the Public Works Department and the people that have PE at the end of their name, that's what they do, and that's who should be overseeing those projects, as I understand was the case with Station 39. That was Brian Reed was the project manager, and, you know, Brian's got his fire station experience under his belt now, so I'm sure he'll do a great job at Station 38. So I don't see that as being justification for, you know, what amounts to $300,000 position. The Calpers thing makes me very uneasy, because I see it as a one-time savings. And I'm going to ask if you two would be a little bit more quiet while I'm speaking, please? The, I see the $158,000 as a one-time savings. Having sat here for as long as I have, and having lived through that recession that we keep referring to, there were many times during that recession, and other times in the city of Folsom's history, when the city didn't have all of the cash to pay that. There have been times when the county didn't give us our property tax when it was supposed to. We went through the triple flip with the state of California on vehicle license fees. There's been a lot of times when the city may or may not have the ballpark $10 million to write that check on a certain day. So I'm very leery about moving from the monthly payment to the annual payment. But, you know, let's assume that we do that. This so-called $300 and something thousand increase in the ambulance fee, as Ernie correctly pointed out, to date, we have seen not one nickel of that money. When the fire chief made the presentation at the last council meeting about the ambulance, the increase in the ambulance fees, the state that pays many of those transport fees pays about 20%. So the fact that, you know, if they're only paying 20% of the previous ambulance fee, there's no guarantee they're going to pay any more money by our increasing it. The only people that were paying the full ride, literally, for the ambulance fees was Kaiser. If we raise our fees, there's no guarantee that Kaiser's going to pay the full ride either. So the way I see it, we don't have a guarantee of any of that $300,000, and we won't know what that's going to be until we get to the end of the next fiscal year. So that money's not sitting in the bank anywhere, and so I don't really think that it's appropriate for us to... it's appropriate for us to count it. If you then add the $160,000 for the AQMD per-capita fee that we're expecting to have to pay at the end of this fiscal year, and you add to that $125,000 that we're going to have to pay to risk benefit, we are at, we are at a net position of having to shell out an additional $612,000. So, I don't see how any of this pencils out. I appreciate the fact that police and fire and probably every department of the city of Folsom thinks that they could do more and better work for the residents of this community if they had more staffing, but, you know, right now, we're looking at adding a staff position to a department that is having a little bit of trouble filling those last two positions. So, the way I see it, once the fire, the police department gets those last two positions filled, we're up a position from what this request would give us anyway, and we don't know how long it might take to get that position filled into the future. So, you know, and typically, we had the discussion two council meetings ago when we approved the budget, that Chief Rodriguez explained to us that we don't typically hire one firefighter at a time or promote one firefighter without promoting a whole bunch more. Typically, we hold an academy and we hire a whole crew, and that's typically a year or 18 months in advance of when we know we're going to open another station. We know that we will be hiring people. We will hire people if we get to the point where we're losing firefighters or police officers by attrition, but I don't know, as I sit here today, that we're at that point. So, I don't have any requests to speak, but is there anybody in the audience that would like to come and speak to this issue? No one? Okay. So, any more questions of staff or comments? Otherwise, I'll call the question. We have Roger's motion and Ernie's second.
I will just say, I have trouble with the whole PERS is a one-time thing because you realize it every year. So, it's only one time if you switch it back, and then it's not there anymore. It is not a one-time thing. It's an every-year thing, first point.
So, long as you have the money in the bank to pay it.
Second point, which we've already discussed, there's no impact at this point. Yes, there is always, that's why we do budgets every year, because we have to adjust and we have to make sure things are where we're going. We have to forecast and predict accurately, which you guys do a tremendous job doing. So, that being said, it's not one time. It's every year. So, that's the first thing. The second point is, Folsom is the highest insured rate in the state. Most of this is paid by insurance companies, almost over 90%, and I don't know the exact figure, but over 90% is paid and collected.
No, no, it's not.
From insurance companies, just it is.
Chief Rodriguez gave a presentation that basically showed that the budget, the shortfall between the ambulance fees that are charged versus the ambulance fees that are paid by either private individuals, the state of California, or the insurance companies is $1.9 million.
The insurance companies, the collecting rate, I think is, and I don't know if anyone has it, Jim, if you know, I think it's 90% from insurance companies. They pay their bill.
Chief Rodriguez, if you remember those numbers from the last meeting, come on down.
While he's doing that, the other part was, I think that's actually, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Councilmember Gaylord, yes. From the insurance companies, was that the question? 79%.
79%? Okay, thank you. So, the idea that we wouldn't get a dime from that makes no sense at all.
Yeah, I just want to make clear that if it was any comment in mind that was construed that way, the, on the PERS side of things, you know, you are correct, Councilmember Gaylord, that every year we could achieve those savings as long as we stuck with that program and never went back, as long as we had that employee onboard. As far as the ambulance fees, the term "don't have a dime" of it was more that we literally have not started collecting that increase yet.
I get that.
So, we don't have a dime, and we're already spending it. That's the issue.
And look, this is something I asked for in the budget. We go back and forth saying, "If you ask, find the money." We find the money. We have these discussions. So, if this thing fails tonight, it's not, it's not anything more than just a discussion we had, and I'm totally fine with it. I understand that. So, this isn't a try to push something that we don't need type thing. It's me thinking, this is what I believe is needed here. So, but when you have the argument, and we can go to vote, but I just want to make sure this is clear, when you make the argument that a personnel, the personnel cost for somebody is always ongoing, but a savings is only one year, it doesn't equate, and it puts things into a, in perspective that I feel is inaccurate. So, I just wanted to make that distinction. The other part was, I said we only have one battalion chief. We only have one battalion chief. We have two division chiefs, but we only have one battalion chief. So, I'm not, I'm not wrong. Correct?
Well, I think the confusion, I think two division chiefs are basically acting as battalion chiefs.
Exactly. And that's the whole point I'm trying to make, is that they have too many hats. So, when we put on a new fire station, let's say, south of 55 years, roofs come up, we do this, we do everything, we staff the station, there's no guarantee we're going to hire another battalion chief. There's only a guarantee that the potential is that that division chief is going to get one more hat. And that's what I'm saying. When I say, to Councilmember Sheldon's point, I'm not trying to be irresponsible with our money. I'm trying to make strategic investments I feel like we need as for the growth. We talked about, you know, how do you, how do you, how do you get rid of that barrier between north of 50 and south of 50, right? We talked about, we talk about that all the time, and you talk about growth and why are people fearful of growth, and it's the byproduct of growth and where we're going with it and how we're planning. And so, we do have an issue with regards to traffic safety. We do have an issue with, you know, we have seven fatalities from traffic-related incidents, regardless if you can pinpoint those on what would, you know, mitigate those going forward. The point is, we do have problems that I want addressed as a council member and that people that I speak to, constituents, want addressed as well. If that's not now, that's fine. I want to put it on the radar, and I appreciate everyone taking the time to have the discussion.
I appreciate that, and the way we start the budget process, the way we started this budget process, and we'll do it again next year, is always with a workshop where we're thinking really high-level and we're talking about the pie in general and how we're cutting it. So, I encourage you, I encourage the entire city council to continue to provide feedback. So, next go-around, if this motion is not successful tonight, for example, if your, if your feeling is that police and fire are currently under-resourced, then I, as your city manager, need to understand how we're going to cut that pie differently so that we can then plan the budget accordingly. Because the way the pie has been traditionally cut and the way we presented it as a result of the feedback we got at the workshop, this is the best budget we could put together with some very talented department heads based on that pie, but it might be that we want to cut it differently.
This motion fails, which, okay, might. I'm looking for real-time answers for these real-time issues. So, whatever that means in your realm, then that means that that's what I'm asking for. So, I think that we need more resources with it. I'm putting it forward. I'm providing some funding mechanisms for that. We'll move forward.
Yeah, but Roger, let me, you know, I'm not opposing you in the sense, but I think I take some objection in my mind that you're the only one that's concerned with this.
It's not me. It's not about me.
Yeah, it is. No, 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 no. Listen me out. I think every one of us, all five of us up here, and the city manager and staff and everybody else, we want to fix this problem. And when you're talking about fatalities without clarifying how, the fatalities are disastrous to the families. I mean, no matter how it happened.
100%.
Okay? But don't use it as if we didn't have this officer, that would have not happened. You know for a fact that's not the case.
That's not what I said either. I said we have a growing problem, and that is example number one, and it's not to use it in vain. I'm saying there's a problem. Red light running, speeding in this city, it's getting crazy. I don't, maybe Councilmember Kozlowski hasn't seen it, but...
But you know, none of that relates to the fatalities as what happened.
For red light runners, Ernie. Two were red light runners. The rest, there was various causes, two of which I believe were speed-related.
Yeah, but the red light runner, they ran and got killed. I mean, come on.
I'm just saying, there's a growing problem. I don't know what, I don't know how you want me to code it, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful, and I don't say, I'm not the only one that says we have a problem. I'm just bringing it to the dais, which is what we're elected to do.
We have it. We know it. I mean, we just haven't figured it out, but the money, we, I don't think any one of us five feel any different you do about the emphasis that we want to make this town safe.
Why I said your vote is your vote for whatever specific reason you're voting for it. So, it's not not holding it against you.
I will never be in favor of deficit spending. If I don't have it, I don't spend it. I know it's coming. I think it's coming. It may not come. There may be something else happening in between. I don't, I don't go out and buy something, and I don't have the money to pay for it.
Half of it is due next month that would be there and funded, fully funded. The PERS payment, 158, which actually is more, but we're only realizing minus whatever the additionals are that Jim mentioned the last council meeting.
With all due respect, Roger, the math is not agreeing with you. It's a half a million dollars, and the savings is 158.
Sorry. $158,000 is, it will be here next month if we were to make that change, is my point that I'm trying to make. So, it's not all entirely deficit spending. I don't know what else. I don't want to beat it to a horse, and I know, I'm not trying to alien anybody on the dais. I'm not trying to say you don't care, Ernie. I'm not trying to say anything about that. I'm just saying it's something I brought forth. Vote how you want.
Can I just turn in here for a second? Roger, I thank you for bringing this. I think this has been a very worthwhile discussion, and I think we all have a better understanding of this, specifically the police staffing levels now and where they're going to be hopefully later this year. But, you know, there's been a couple of references to PERS and using, you know, moving to a lump-sum payment and using that savings, but the elephant in the room that we really haven't talked about tonight is the contribution that we have to make to PERS every year. Just to put it into perspective and so the public understands, in the 2016-17 fiscal year, our contribution to PERS was $10,415,137. In fiscal year 2223, it's going to be $21,455. So, when Councilmember Kozlowski, you know, talked about that we can't always be fearful, I understand that, but we have to be cautious and we have to be conservative because it's like we have this, like if it was your own personal budget, we have this huge crushing mortgage that is going to squeeze basic city services.
Here's the problem with that, and I totally agree with you. The issue with that is that, number one, it's year by year. Number two, the amount saving versus the amount paying, you're always going to pay a substantial amount. So, there is a small reduction, which is 7%, I believe, or something to that effect, but the thing is, is that that doesn't equate. We're always going to pay that, and Jim Francis has already said this is zero exposure to our cash flow currently, and that's currently correct.
No, but Roger, that's not what he said. What he said was, and I repeated it, and I've repeated it about five times, we have never paid this on an annual basis, and there have been many years when we could not write a check for $21 million because we didn't get our property taxes, we didn't get our vehicle license fees, any number of factors where tax money is coming back to the city from another agency, and we can't write a check for $21 million if we don't have $21 million and pay the employees' staff and pay all the other contractual obligations that we have. At any given moment, we don't necessarily have an entire year's worth of retirement money sitting in the bank. And if we don't have it, we can't write the check. That immediately puts us back on monthly.
Do you see that being an issue in your seat right now? I mean, yes, to think about that and keeping that in mind, but as we sit today, we could, this is something that would, does it make sense to you at all? Like, as far as, is it a good move to make?
In terms of the PERS?
Yeah.
Well, the big issue is on that, two things, actually. One is the cash flow, and right now, we are in a good cash flow position, and so, it would not be a problem now.
Can I stop you right there? So, what I said was not incorrect. There's no exposure to cash flow with this.
At this moment.
At this very moment.
So, thank you. I just want to make that point.
At this very moment, but that doesn't mean we won't be in that situation a year from now.
Agreed.
Roger, I've sat here for 21 years. I've sat in this chair when we, when we had, when we gave golden handshakes to police officers and firemen and tons of city employees because we didn't have the money to continue to employ 600 people. So, I've been here. I went through that downturn. Right now, everything's coming up roses. That may not be the case six months from now. The front page of the Bee today is looking at the state of California's $19 billion reserve and saying that it's not enough. If it was a five-year, a five-year economic downturn, the state of California would blow through $185 billion.
I'm aware of that.
That's 10 times what the state of California's reserve is right now. So, do we have any other comments? If not, I will call the question.
Councilmember Sheldon?
No.
Aquino?
No.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
No.
And Howell?
No. Okay, we will convene the Joint City Council, Successor Agency, Public Finance Authority, Folsom South of 50 Parking Authority, Folsom Ranch Refinancing Authority meeting. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Here.
Aquino?
Here.
Gaylord?
Here.
Kozlowski?
Here.
And Howell?
Here. We have items B, I, and double I on the consent calendar. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Oh, sorry.
I'll move approval.
Have a second.
Thank you.
Close the wrong binder.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes. That will move to item 10, City Manager Report.
Hello, everyone. It is my pleasure to share that I have named Stacy Tumani as our new Director of Finance. She's right out here in the audience, and I know you all get to know her a lot better. Stacy will be transitioning to the role July 1st, and she's already hard at work, working in close partnership with Assistant City Manager Jim Francis, who will retain the CFO role. So, they'll work as a great team, and so, welcome to Stacy. She's a longtime city employee. As you heard earlier, the 59th Annual Folsom Pro Rodeo kicks off on the 4th of July and runs until June 6th. Folsom has been named the second-best lake-beach town in America. As Independence Day approaches, a reminder that fireworks can quickly become dangerous if proper precautions are not taken, and the Folsom Fire Department asks you to be sure that you stay safe on 4th of July, and please only purchase and use safe and sane fireworks, which Councilmember Sheldon can tell you exactly where you can purchase those, I'm sure. I wanted to share what probably, hopefully, you've seen all over social media, that two of our outstanding solid waste division employees actually recovered a woman's wedding ring from one of our solid waste trucks. She had accidentally thrown it away in the garbage after washing dishes, and our employees worked with her to fish it out of the garbage at the landfill, so she was very thankful and she knew that it was wrapped. She put her rings on a paper towel on the counter, and her and her husband, one of them, who, I'm not sure which one, someone swept up the paper towel and threw it in a Costco bag.
Clearly, he did it.
Yeah, clearly.
Of course. I was going to say the same thing. Obviously, he did it.
Of course, it was him.
But the other problem is, apparently, we now know that almost everyone in Folsom uses Costco garbage bags.
Yes, so she knew it was a Costco garbage bag, and she knew it was wrapped or near in a paper towel, and with that evidence, they went through the whole truck pulling all Costco garbage bags and found it eventually. So, kind of amazing and super proud of those employees. And I'll have to, I want to add that I did send notes to both of them and got back very similar responses, which were, "I'd do it all again, you know, I love serving the city," you know, just amazing employees. Our free summer concert series at City Lions Park continues this Friday from 7:00 to 9:00 featuring the popular dance band Inner Soul. These are free concerts presented by our amazing Parks and Rec Department. And finally, all seniors age 55 and over, boy, I'm getting close to being labeled a senior, are invited to this, to a fun Independence Day celebration at the Folsom Senior Center right next door from 11:30 to 1:30, and that will include light refreshments, a raffle, and a lively game of bingo.
On Friday.
On Friday, June 28th. On Friday, June 28th.
Are you calling the numbers at that, Ernie?
I always go.
Is that it? Elaine?
That is all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Ernie?
Okay, I didn't, I passed it the other day, but I'm going to come back this time. First of all, I'm going to ask the city manager to, after the end of the rodeo and the fireworks, when everybody gets a chance to take a breather, I want to start our meetings again with the chamber and discuss the tourism that I'm not satisfied with. What I saw last week was fine, obviously very well done, but it does not give me any satisfaction at all beside, and I'd just like to pursue it again and talk about it.
You are welcome to go meet with the chamber if you like. I would recommend doing that. And if you don't get the answers you want, then we will entertain another presentation here, but I don't know that we need to do that. I don't want to set another meeting to have the chamber folks come back unless you've met with them privately.
No, I don't want this to be a public one at this time. I want it to be a...
Like we did last time.
Yeah, like we did last time.
Okay.
I can facilitate those. That's no problem.
I think that will...
Okay, no problem.
Good, okay.
Same page.
Second, you know, we're talking about fatalities. We have one again, hasn't had much advertisement. I'm going to make a real statement. I feel very sincere about this. We get more and more requests to make alcohol available to our people in town, and that's fine. I'm not a teetotaler, you know? But I want to send a message to everybody that does have an establishment that does produce this, that I'm getting sick and tired of hearing where the establishment eliminates the problem by somebody that maybe has gone too far, and drank too much, and they've lost control of their responsibilities, by just putting them out the door and letting them go on the city streets and rent for themselves. That's not fair. We lost a young lady in her 20s, basically because we put her out the door. That's unacceptable. I want the establishments to take a proactive role, not just throw them out the door. That's the old-fashioned type. We're better than that today. I want them to call our police department, ask them to come down there, put the person in safe ways to get them home, so that we're not losing young people because they get dumb. We've all been young, and we've all been dumb. Some of us are okay, and some are not. I don't want to see no more of these young kids. And I call them kids. Most people are kids to me nowadays. However, I want them to have a sense, a chance to survive, and not put them out on our streets where they may not survive, for whatever reason. So I want the council to, at some point, take another workshop on this and think about it. Maybe we need to relook at our entertainment audience, okay, to see if we can maybe make it stronger. So I ask the mayor to reconsider it, and the mayor in the bright spirit.
Again, I would suggest that that conversation happen first with the police department, because that's the first line of defense on that.
I'll have a talk with him, if you don't mind.
You are welcome to speak with anybody you like, anytime.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, every time I get a call from Elaine, and it's late at night or something, I know something bad has happened in Folsom, and it's enough of that.
Well, sometimes you call her late at night, too, just for the record.
Not nothing bad. I'm asking a question. So that's basically what I want to do. And again, you mentioned fireworks. We do have fireworks in this town. There's twelve booths in various locations. Please, be safe. We make quite a bit of money in this town. There is a lot of taxes that come out of this, the sale into fireworks, but not a dime of that is worthwhile if we be careless and do it. I've been doing this for 25 years in this town, and we've had a few minor goof-ups. Kids don't realize that spinners spin, and they go into the grass and it causes fires. But we never had no major one, and we don't want no major one, okay? Everybody that runs them booths got to be very cautious, and all you that buy it got to be real cautious, okay? Don't take it for granted, because that's when things go wrong. So enjoy the Fourth, and you see good fireworks on the rodeo. They have a good display. Enjoy our Fourth of July. That's what it's all about. That's what we earned, and that's what we defend. But be careful with it, okay? I can't emphasize that. We tell our people, we have young, we have young college people running our booths, and I know they know what to do. So just be careful on this, and everybody get back, and the next time we have a meeting, everybody's safe. That's all.
Mike?
We had our monthly SACOG meeting on Thursday last week, and a couple of main topics that we talked about. There was an expert who has quote-unquote written the book on paid express lanes for freeways, who gave us a long dissertation on when to and when to not use those, and how successful they are economically. Interesting little tidbit of information that came out of it is, the express lanes we have currently are for either car pools or for low-emission vehicles. The paid express lanes, if you've been to San Diego, or Los Angeles, or lots of places around the country, are ones where you pay a flex fee based on the time of day and the amount of traffic volume that there is to join that stream. Some of those include the low-emission vehicles and the car pools, and some of them don't. The most successful ones actually don't include those other ones. It's paid all the time at some kind of fee that's appropriate for what the traffic volume is.
I think there might be one in East Bay.
I think you're right.
There might be one in Sonal.
I think you're absolutely right. So that was one interesting thing about it. The other thing interesting about it is that the most successful financial solution, so this is a topic of discussion that has come up because of the, because vehicle mileage has gotten better, and gas tax revenue has gone down. So people are looking for other ways to maintain our highways and gain revenue. So this is one idea that's kicked around, but interestingly, the projects that are most successful are ones that were purpose-built to be express lanes. So they actually added volume to the freeway, and really went over the top doing this. The projects that were less successful financially but did cover their costs were ones where just existing lanes were converted, okay? So, but, the thing is about the existing lanes being converted, you don't get much in the way of revenue out of the deal, but you do get all of the traffic movement benefit of moving people through the freeway faster. So just some FYI stuff to consider, and there's some good books out on the topic.
And I think one more thing on that. I think most of the new construction ones were typically public-private partnerships.
Yes, that's exactly correct.
Funded by departments of transportation, necessarily.
Yeah, the one example project that he pointed to was, I guess, one of the freeways in Dallas has a really expensive project where they submerged part of the highway and overhung part of it to create an express set of lanes that you can't see if you knew what the freeway looked before. But that's one of the more successful ones, both economically and in terms of moving traffic. However, it came at great construction expense, and, you know, over many, many years.
Yeah, the guardrails are lined with mink and all of that.
It's the same idea as the Big Dig in Boston. It was, you know, building something purposely, and it took forever, and cost a fortune. So that was the main...
That actually, just for the record, is the...
I knew you'd like that one.
...highest construction cost on any public works project ever in the United States.
Congratulations, Massachusetts.
And the mafia was not involved.
So the other topic was an easy one. The SACOG runs a, has run a program for the last two years called Civic Lab, which is intended to work with communities that are part of SACOG on test projects that help with mobility and transportation. City of Folsom has participated in that somewhat. They're looking to year three to determine how to push the program down the road, and one of the suggestions was actually to, as it stands right now, it's a program that's intended to be comprehensively brainstorming through implementation. Some city staffs are more capable, like ours, than others, and they're looking to make the program for year three more à la carte, so that where you need assistance, SACOG can provide some staffing and assistance for that. So that's those two things. Very, very, very excited about the restriping project on Blue Ravine moving ahead. It's one great big lane right now, but it's going to be, it's going to be two, still two lanes in each direction, but with a more protected, obvious bike lane on either side. So that should help with some of the traffic situation there, hopefully. Couple of reminders, the Hometown Parade is on Saturday morning at 9:30 on Sutter Street, and we had a presentation from a mom here in Folsom that's helping put on a fundraiser for the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation on July 13th. I encourage you all to come out on Saturday to the Folsom, that Saturday, to the Folsom Tap House between 11:00 and 3:00. Chip in, and make sure you call Lyft or Uber when you're done. Very good. Thank you.
Roger?
So, as was the presentation given last council meeting, the air board is, they will be moving forward with a vote in October on a per capita fee. We are working together with them and our city manager to put together a community workshop. It looks like it'll be at the, either the end of July or beginning of August at some point. So we'll have more updates on there, but there will be a lot of input, or information gathering, but also a lot of chances for public comment and public input to ensure that however you feel on it, you express your concerns on it. So that vote does come in October, so be forewarned. A couple of things that I just took notes, I don't usually speak a lot during this. One thing I just wanted to say, blaming the business owners here in Folsom, I happen to know the ones where this issue happened. It wasn't their fault. People need to be held accountable, although tragic as it is, the business owners only have so much, so many things they can do, okay? So they're good folks with a good business here in Folsom, so I just didn't like that. Piggybacking off the business owners that, the business owners that were here from the historic district, I did nothing for them. Folsom PD did everything for them. I caught the comments, and I was receptive to it. I did go speak to the historic business, their meeting that they had down there, and it is an issue down there. They have problems down there, and they are worried about it. My advice to them was to be more vocal and come here, so I was happy to see them express the concerns they had, so that was great. And with regard, we've heard the rodeo talk every single council meeting now since the rodeo, and I personally have been to the rodeo with my son for 16 years, and my daughter for the last eight years, every year, and I can't say that I've ever seen one iota of any type of animal abuse, or anything that there, that was alluded to, the comments made today. All I see is a amazing event put on by a lot of amazing people within the chamber and within the city. And I've been behind the scenes, I've seen it, my son mutton busted on the muttons, and if that's what you call muttons, but...
Think they're just called sheep.
There you go. So the point is, is that I love the rodeo, and I'll love it forever, and if I ever saw anything like that, I'd be the first one to say anything about it, but not in this case.
You're here.
Thank you. And I didn't bring a hat, wish I did, but I didn't.
I think you were supposed to say yee-haw, Mike.
Yee-haw. Last thing, I'll say this, is we had another tragic loss of an officer, and the saying enough is enough, it truly is enough is enough. It's absolutely ridiculous, and for me, I commented on it, and I caught kind of backlash from some outside folks, and it drives me insane. So the community support for our law enforcement officers that we have here, I'm proud of it, and I'm proud of everyone who wears that badge. And I would just like to ask that we can adjourn the meeting in honor of Officer Tara O'Sullivan with SAC PD, if we could. That's it.
Okay. I'm going to give the same warning, that I just did a quick calculation. I estimate that I have done this at 500 council meetings. About 25 meetings a year over the last 20-plus years. So please, 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 drive carefully, stop running red lights, stop rolling through stop signs. I have noticed in the last couple of months, I've been paying more attention while I was driving down East Bidwell. Either that, or I've been to Costco too many times recently. But when I'm driving down East Bidwell at 45, everyone's passing me. So could you guys, like, follow me around and just arrest all those people around me? And put them, like, in prison forever? Again, please drive carefully. The folks that are walking around at night on the sidewalks, or even worse, in the street that are not wearing clothing, that will allow you to be seen. There was an adorable little family in my neighborhood today, two little tiny kids that looked like they barely knew how to walk, and the mom and dad are walking in the street, you know? Please don't do that. If there's a sidewalk there, use it. There are places in Folsom where we don't have sidewalks, and if you have no choice, I understand, like, my neighborhood, the cul-de-sacs, don't have sidewalks, but the rest of the neighborhood does, so please use them. Please drive carefully. Please be even more careful with the potential for drunk driving incidences over the holiday weekend. Enjoy the rodeo. Try to stay out of the heat. And with that, we are adjourned until January 9th, July 9th, sorry. January.
[laughter][1793.61]